Okay, ready? Good evening. I will now call to order the July twenty first, two thousand and twenty five regular school board meeting. And we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so new business, the election of a chairman.
Okay. And did you all do the approval of the agenda yet?
Oh, no, sorry, thank you. No, it's there, it's there. So the review and approval of tonight's agenda, are there any questions or comments?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, election of a chairman. This time is set aside on the agenda to conduct the nomination process and subsequent voting for the position of chairman for the Clark County School Board pursuant to policy BCB. So I would open the floor for nominations at this time.
I move to nominate Katie Kerholbert for the position of chair of the school board.
Second.
All right, we have a nomination and a second. At this point, we'll go ahead and vote. It'd be a roll call, right?
Yes. Mr. Brumback?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mr. Kerholbert?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
All right, congratulations to Ms. Kerholbert. And with that, my part of the election process is over. So you can move over if you like one seat, or you can stay where you're at. But we had this on the agenda if necessary, so we'll move on to you conducting the election of vice chairman.
Okay, so the election of vice chair. Do we have a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Clay Brumback for vice chair.
Second.
All in favor? Or wait, no, we have to do a roll call.
We gotta do roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brumback?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mr. Kerholbert?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Brumback.
Careful what you ask for.
Okay, tonight's approval of the consent agenda, are there any questions or comments regarding the tonight's consent agenda?
I move that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, to the finance committee report. So on July twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, or for, Mr. Nucci will now provide a report from the finance committee meeting held on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. There's two reports we'll go out, go over. One's the memorandum and one's the revenue packet. If we can just start on the revenue packet, page one. The memorandum will kind of touch on what's in the revenue packet. So this sheet that you're looking at is changes to the revenue budget. We saw this last month. So starting at the top, our fiscal year twenty five revised budget is twenty nine point two million. That's where we were at the beginning of the fiscal year. We had changes to local funding of sixty four thousand dollars higher. A lot of that had to do with an increase in dual enrollment of thirty two thousand and also an increase for tuition for private services of twenty two thousand. State funding's a little bit different. We're in the, we're planning to receive three hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars less than what we started the fiscal year at. A lot of that has to do with changes to the funding headcount or ADM, which is average daily membership. The lower your ADM or average daily membership, the less funding you get from the state. So we're about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars negative there. Also change in Calc file. Our Calc file is a file that the state uploads and they'll, they'll upload how much funding they'll give you based on the local funding that you provide. And that's about sixty two thousand dollars less than we anticipated. Changes to federal funding, there's title grants of eighty five thousand dollars that will roll over to next year, fiscal year twenty six. When funding rolls over to the next year, you can't recognize it as revenue in the current year, which for this will be fiscal year twenty five. And then there's also a little bit of an insurance recovery adjustment of a little over two thousand dollars. So local, state, and federal added altogether is three hundred and forty nine, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than when we anticipated in the beginning of the fiscal year. The next line item we'll go over is general fund transfer, and that's still on page one. This is something that you can highlight, you can kind of star. This is kind of the main takeaway of page one. We're in a position where we can transfer seven hundred and twenty three thousand dollars back to the county, back to their general fund. Usually what happens when we're in a situation where we have a surplus like this, we ask to repurpose it to our capital fund. There's a process that has to happen with that. We have to have a detail of what we plan to spend it on and it has to get board of supervisor approval. But I think that number really presents a good case for the budget. You know, it says that we're under budget. We're not over budget, we're not asking the county for more money. We're actually in a position where we can give funding back. Even with the adjustments to the state, you know, we're still under budget. We can give funding back to the county. And I think it says that we're not just thoughtlessly spending money. If we were, that seven twenty three could be a six hundred thousand, it could be a five hundred thousand, a two hundred thousand. So I think all in all, that's a budget that everyone in the room could be happy with where it's landing right now. So add local, state, and federal, plus the general fund transfer that may change a little bit. Our estimated revenue is twenty eight point one million, which you see at the bottom of the page as opposed to the twenty nine point two. Any questions on that? Okay, hearing none, the next couple pages was, will just go into more detail of the funds. Page two and page three will go into more detail of the operating fund. So in the middle of page three, at the bottom of the chart, you'll see twenty nine point two for revised budget. We received twenty four point one million, so we received eighty two percent of our operating fund budget. Jumping over to page four, that's the school food service. So nothing really changed from last month. Our revised budget is one point five million. Our year-to-date actual is about eight hundred and fifty four thousand. The question you might have is why is there such a big gap there this late or closing of the fiscal year? And that's because the excess fund, the excess fund balance right above the total. We have revenue of four hundred and forty seven thousand, but we haven't received any new additional revenue for that. Capital fund on page five, pretty much the same thing as last month. Revised budget, one point nine million. Year-to-date actual, one point four million. And we have about a little less than five hundred thousand left, left in available budget. Debt fund on page six, usually quiet, but this is a page that you can kind of star, make note of because you'll be seeing it a little bit, a little bit later today. So that second line item, school debt, B A B interest subsidy, which is Build America Bond Interest Subs, Interest Subsidy. We planned or budgeted for sixty eight point nine thousand, so sixty nine thousand. However, we only received sixty five thousand year-to-date. So there's a remaining balance of three thousand seven hundred and sixty eight dollars. The reason why that isn't matched or that isn't balanced right now is because it was a calculation error on our end. So we're only receiving the sixty five thousand dollars and nothing more. So in order to balance the budget, what we need to do is we need to transfer funding in from another fund to make that line item whole. And the reason why we're bringing that up to you is because if it was a transfer fund within fund, debt fund within debt fund, capital fund within capital fund, we wouldn't have to bring that to your attention. But since we're pulling it from a different fund, in this case, operating, we have to bring it to your attention. It's something you have to vote on. We can't just transfer operating fund to debt fund and not let you guys know about it. So that's something that's going to be brought up in new business, something that you guys will vote on. So it's just a transfer of three thousand seven hundred and sixty eight dollars from the operating fund to make that line item whole. Any questions on that? Okay, jumping back over to the memorandum. We've talked about everything on section one in the memorandum. So then we'll jump down to section two, which is the supplemental appropriations request. Two, number two, a transfer request of three thousand seven hundred and sixty eight dollars from the school operating fund to the school debt fund to cover a shortfall in revenue we just went over. Number two, number one, is a request of one thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety six cents for a LG fifty five inch class UT seventy five series LED smart TV and Vivo Ultra Heavy, Ultra Heavy Duty Mobile Cart Stand that will support the Anatomog table at the high school. What is an Anatomog table? It's a three D visualization and virtual dissection tool for anatomy education. So basically picture a pool table. Instead of green felt, you have a flat screen TV. And then you can kind of hover over it and see three D depictions of the human body. So why we're bringing that to your attention is we received funding from Claude Moore Charitable Foundation. They gave money to Laurel Ridge Community College. And they're giving money to us in the, in one thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. And for us to be able to receive that and spend that on a TV, a fifty five inch TV and a mobile set that will go with the Anatomog table is something that you guys need to vote on. So that'll be brought up in new business with the appropriate language for you guys to vote on. And that's for a TV and a mobile card set to support the Anatomog table at the high school. Any questions on any of the supplemental appropriation requests? Okay, hearing none, that's all I got.
Well, I would just like to thank Mitch, Mr. Nucci. He's doing a wonderful job. And one thing that I've been highly impressed with is, over and all, I've started, Nancy in his office had started a list of acronyms. And I had one from a strategic plan. And one of our goals is to put that together. But in education, we use a lot of acronyms, a lot of specific speak. And we oftentimes don't think about it. But Mr. Nucci, coming from the federal government, has really picked up on the Virginia education terms almost instantly. So I'm really impressed with his level of work. And the budget this year, I'm really also happy with where we finished at, being really good stewards of money and being able to finish the year strong despite less funding from the state. And the reason we have less funding is, and we knew this from the very beginning of the year, once, you know, about ten days in, our enrollment was less than projected. So when you look at that loss of revenue, the bulk of it comes back from having less kids. So have, considering that and still finishing the year strong, both in capital and operating is highly impressive, so. Thank you.
Dr. Bowlin?
Yes.
Yeah, a question. How do, how are we going to be for student enrollment for the coming year?
Well, we estimated it on a much more conservative basis. Not that it, and it's not much different than before. It had been a formula that had worked. But what we did was we hadn't in the past really considered, are some kids maybe graduating early or something between junior and senior year? So we went back and looked at that as a long-term and factored that in. And also, instead of going on a three-year kindergarten enrollment average, we went on a five. It's still always just a projection. But the, the, there's a group at the University of Virginia that's a department that does population studies and they do a estimate of school enrollment. Their estimate for us is a lot, quite a bit higher than what I put in. And also, the demographer there thinks it's going to be a little bit higher, as does VDOE. I put it in at eighteen fifty, which is more conservative. But until we go day ten and kind of get an average of the first ten days, you're always kind of on pins and needles. And I will say, we have a really good and strong budget. But salary savings is a big part, being where you hire people in versus to where the people exited out. And last year, we had a lot more buffer room. We were hiring a lot more people with no to little experience, which saved us a lot of money. This year, it's not been quite as much. We do have savings, but it's not as substantial. So we'll be certainly watching as the first ten days, you know, take place next year.
So after ten days, we can get a firmer idea of just where we stand, yeah?
Yeah, you do a daily enrollment, which is not like absenteeism. If anybody shows up any of the ten days, they keep counting. And you do a ten-day ADM enrollment projection. It gives you a pretty good idea, but all the money is distributed based on the end-of-March ADM. So you kind of, kind of keep watching to March to see where you're at there. Because that's where the funding's based on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Nucci. Okay, superintendent's update?
All right, I don't have much this evening, being in the, during the summer, mainly getting ready for next school year. But we are looking forward to the start of a productive school year. Our new teachers will report with us on August the sixth, with returning faculty reporting on August the eleventh. Convocation is going to be on August the twelfth in the auditorium of the high school. We'll start at eight AM with an inspirational, I'll do the introduction, some pieces, and we'll have an inspirational keynote by Ms. Kim Bearding at eight thirty AM. Ms. Bearding is the co-founder and a language arts teacher at the Ron Clark Academy in Atlanta, Georgia. She's a nationally recognized teacher. Her keynote aligns with our twenty four, twenty five division-wide book study of her book Crash Course, The Life Lessons My Students Taught Me. Her kind spirit will be an excellent start to a student-focused school year. Of everyone that I've heard speak, she's by far my favorite speaker. So I'd like to invite you all, if you can make it around eight, eight thirty on the twelfth. I think you'll find it to be a good use of a morning. She always has a good message. And also, in what was an outstanding year athletically for Clark, we just recently found out that we finished as the BHSL Class Two Runner-Up for the National Guard Cup. This is an extremely difficult award to win or even place in. Reflecting on these type of awards, we're extremely lucky to have our coaches and kids. So that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay. Audience comments? Do we have any audience comments? Anybody like to speak? Okay. Okay, consideration of appointment of Joint Administrative Services Board member. So do we have a nomination for the JAS committee position?
I move that the Clark County School Board appoint Katie Kerholbert to the Point Joint Administrative Services Board for the remainder of two thousand and twenty five.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, consideration of appointment of Budget and Finance Committee. So because it's requested at this time that the school board consider the appointment of two of its members to the budget.
Just one.
One, one member to the Budget and Finance Committee for calendar year two thousand and twenty five. As per past practice, these two appointments have traditionally been the chairman and vice chairman of the school board. Policy BCE is silent, however, on which two members of the board might serve on the Budget and Finance Committee. So is there a nomination for the Finance Committee?
I move that the Clark County School Board appoint Clay Brumback and Steve Nucci to the Budget and Finance Committee for the calendar year two thousand and twenty five.
Okay, is there a second?
Before you all go, remember, oh, yeah, we could do, have to do Steve. I was gonna say, you're already a member, Katie, as a board member.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, but we need to recognize Steve, too. Sorry, I missed.
Okay. And is there a second, Mr. Wilson? Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consideration of appointment to the Policy Committee. It's requested at this time that the school board considers the appointment of a mem, of a second member to the Policy Committee for calendar year two thousand and twenty five. Is there a nomination for Policy Committee?
I move that the Clark County School Board appoint Casey Kennedy to the Policy Committee for the calendar year two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Consideration of appointment to the Strategic Planning Committee. It's requested that the school board considers the appointment of a member of its, of the board to the Strategic Planning Committee for the calendar year two thousand and twenty five. Although the initial work of the committee has been completed, it is anticipated that additional meetings will occur in the future as the school division's strategic plan is amended and/or revised. So is there a nomination?
I have a, I just have a question on that. Can we table the nomination and the vote until we have a new member?
Yes, any of these can be acted on tonight or could be tabled. The main reason we brought them back up for tonight is we need a chairman. And then the JAS met before we came back. But any of this can be tabled until we get a new member.
Okay.
Can we do that in one nomination, or one?
One motion?
One motion?
I think that you could probably do a motion, just say pursuant to eight point oh one, eight point oh two, eight point oh six, eight point oh seven, eight point oh eight, to table all those nominations till the next meeting if you wanted to do so.
Well, we just have, the only ones left, right, are the gifted and the?
But they're new, new community members?
Well, we could do it maybe one by one and table the board member part.
Okay, 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 so let's.
The one about, if we go, yeah, through that, then we probably, if you all would like, you would just make a motion to table the Strategic Planning Committee nominee, because that is just a board member.
I move to table the nomination for the Strategic Planning Committee nominee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So consideration of the Gifted Advisory Committee. School Board Policy BCF requires the school board to appoint advisory councils or committees of citizens of the school division for consultation with reference to specific matters pertaining to local schools. Although the Gifted Committee is not, not required in policy or by the Code of Virginia, staff recommends the appointment of a committee to provide recommendation about the education of gifted learners. Per their bylaws, the committee shall serve without compensation for a two-year term. Division staff are required to serve based on their position in relation to the purpose of each committee. Per its bylaws, the Gifted Advisory Committee is to have not more than fifteen voting members. Their term will expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. So the returning members are Dr. Jessica Nail, staff, Shelley Daisley, staff. What I'm getting ready to say are all staff members. Molly Tinsman, Sally Spencer, Patrick White. Brittany Irish, term ends June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. Megan Purvis, her term ends June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. New members are Laura Cullen, Colalane, reappointment. Her term will end June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. Maureen Hardman, her term ends June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. I'm gonna go through the rest. Nancy Warris Gola, Warris Golaola. Sorry, Elizabeth Alavito and Tara Vought, all of their terms will end June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. So is there a motion to approve the members that I just listed?
And I guess the way you would do that is just put, I move to appoint the new and returning members of the Gifted Advisory Committee as presented for the twenty five, twenty six school year. You would just leave out that part blank as the school board liaison.
Right.
Until we return, and then we'd do a separate motion to table that.
Okay. I move to approve the, the new and returning members of the Gifted Advisory Committee as presented for the two thousand and twenty five, twenty six school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to make a motion? Yeah, I make a motion to table the appointment of the school board liaison for the Gifted Advisory Committee until such a new member is present.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, consideration of Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. The school board policy requires the school board to appoint advisory councils or committee of citizens. Exactly what I said the last time. I'm gonna just go through the returning members. So the staff are Dr. Nail, Dana Waring, Thomas Fulmer, his term ends June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. Carmen Westbrook's term ends June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. The new members are going to be Robert Wagner of Howard Chalky, Carmen Westbrook, apparent, Dr. Sherry Maia, Laurel Ridge Community College, Carrie Desjardins, and Leslie Kerr. And all of those appointments will end June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. So is there a motion to approve these returning members and new members?
Move to approve the returning members.
Okay, and the new members, okay. And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The consideration of Special Education Advisory Board. The consideration of Special Education Advisory Board. So again, the school board policy BCF requires us to appoint advisory councils for, for the Special Education Advisory Council. The returning members are gonna be Frank Moore, Gatlin Gosnell, Sam Piggott, and the new members would be Jayoni Wood, Jeff Pankretz and Cara Vandenberg. And then we will put on hold the school, it's recommended to put on hold the school board liaison until we have a new member. So is there a motion to approve the members of the Special Education Advisory Committee?
I move to approve the slate of members for the Special Education Advisory Committee as presented for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consideration of School Health Advisory Committee. So again, per the policy BCF, we're looking at the returning members Frank Moore, Renee Weir, Gabriel, Gabrielle Whalen, Tate Simmons, Tessa Brody Wine, Ray Gunner, Kristen Kelpfer. And then new members would be Bruce Reschio and Gina Nickerbacher. Both of those terms would end June thirtieth, 2027. And then we would need a new school board liaison, and so we would table that until we have a new board member. So is there a motion to approve the new board members for the School Health Advisory Committee?
Yeah, question on that. Dr. Bowling, are you happy with the new members coming in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I move that we accept the returning members as presented.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of Policies and Regulations for First and Second Reading. So the Policy Committee met on July eleventh, 2025 and reviewed the recommended updates from VSPA. And there's a number of recommended updates from VSA, VSPA. We're recommending approval for first and second reading. You can see that there's a number of policies that you see listed. There are some basic changes in those policies because the VSPA has a new board attorney and they changed the language to suit their writing style. So like there's, you know, some colons removed or periods added, just basic word changes. So is there a motion to approve these policies and regulations as presented for first and second reading?
Before we do, I thought I may point out one if it's all right, Ms. Kerr-Holbert. Most of those are more semantics, but now, there are a few that add a few things in, but our staff is on top of everything related to it. This does move forward and allow the Policy Committee to be more productive because this was one of the larger listings of policies for updates that I've ever seen. So we got to the point that we were nearly forty-some policies in. We'll still have about five or six to work on after this, but we feel confident in moving all these forward, but probably the one up there that's of the most substantial change, and I know it was a topic of interest for the board as well that we bring it back, but actually kind of the debate ended, which is the student cellphone piece because a recent House bill advanced to the Senate and was signed by the governor. So it's now in Virginia code or Virginia law that all Virginia public schools are bell-to-bell cellphone-free zones pre-K-12 in Virginia. So now that it's actually in Virginia code, VSPA did a policy stating that. And basically, the policy just says PK-12 is bell-to-bell cellphone-free for students and that districts will consider how to regulate cellphone use for staff and that IEP teams and 504 teams can make adjustments if needed. But there's really no guidance on any consequences or anything of that nature. So what we recommend doing is just adopting the VSPA policy as written, but we changed our existing cellphone policy to a regulation because our policy tells the consequences for each type of infraction and will help our administrators and to make our existing policy align with the VSPA policy and the new law. All we had to do at the high school level was remove the phrase "during instructional time" and change it to "bell-to-bell" because that was the only thing that we had debated prior. So that, that policy and aligning regulation will bring us into alignment with the new bill, uh, new bill by day one. But that's probably the most substantial policy in that list.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote on that or no?
It's all part of it.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I move to approve the policies and regulations as presented for first and second reading.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I should've said this before when I gave the chance to give a comment or a question, but prior to the start of the school year, could we let parents and families have a heads-up that, that it has changed from what we were doing in the spring?
Yes, we certainly will.
Thank you.
You don't think they're all tuned in?
Probably not, but this is an exciting night. It's an exciting meeting.
Sitting on the edge of their seats right now.
No, I am. Okay, consideration of FY-26 supplemental appropriation. So it's requested that the board approve the supplemental appropriation of $1,419.96 from the Claude Moore Charitable Foundation to be used at CCHS to purchase a TV and a stand to be used with the an atimage table. Is there a motion for this supplemental appropriation?
I move that the FY-26 School Operating Fund budgeted expenditure and appropriation be increased $1,419.96 and that revenue budget and appropriation be increased by the same amount for the purpose of receiving funds from the Claude Moore Charitable Foundation to be used to purchase a LG Smart TV and Vivo Ultra Heavy Duty Mobile Cart Stand.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consideration, it's requested that the school board approve a supplemental appropriation of $3,768 from the School Operating Fund to this FY-26 School Debt Fund to cover the reduction in debt fund revenue. Is there a motion for this recommendation?
I move that the FY-26 School Operating Fund budgeted expenditure and appropriation be decreased $3,768 and that the FY-26 School Debt Fund budgeted revenue and appropriation be increased by the same amount for the purpose of transferring funds to cover the school debt, BAB interest subsidy line item.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of a reflection garden at CCHS. So Ms. Nina Pierce is asking for approval to establish a reflection garden at Clark County High School in memory of her daughter Hayden Smallwood and another former student, Madison Mallory. Ms. Pierce has met with CCHS administrators and Randy Trinari to plan the location of this garden, and the parties have agreed to place this garden in front of the high school along the area where students are dropped off and picked up. This reflection garden will have a bench and a flower box that Ms. Pierce has agreed to maintain. A picture is provided for you to see the plan. It's beautiful. So do we have a motion to approve the addition of this reflection garden? Or any questions or concerns?
Questions?
Yes.
What is actually gonna be entailed in this? Who is gonna be, is this something the students are gonna do or the people who wanna have it are gonna do? And who's paying for anything, any costs entail?
I can answer that. If the people who are asking to do it would do it and they would pay for it and have to maintain it when you do a memory thing. So it would be the family of the deceased student that would pay for the materials and do the work and the maintenance.
And Ms. Nina Pierce is here tonight if, if you wanna answer any questions?
Yes, I'm Nina Pierce. I'm Hayden's mother. Hayden and Madison both attended Clark County High School from pre-K up until Hayden was a graduate of 2023, Madison was a sophomore and she passed away. And so both of our families combined have put in the money to purchase all of the material and there will be no expense to the school, no obligation to the county or the school. We're fully prepared to maintain and upkeep and keep this presentable for the students to be able to go and remember their last names.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Yeah?
May I make an offer here? I will provide a hand-forged and fabricated bench if I can get some shop help from the high school student body, from the Vo-Tec students for this at no charge.
That would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you.
Just before, before we bring this up and vote on that, it's something maybe that we should keep in the back of our head or back somewhere that we could think about locations on school property or something that, for other families that may wanna do that and we could have a, I don't know, a little bit more.
Extension.
Uh, y- y- yes, so an area that's prepared, maybe just, unfortunately, our school's seen its, its fair share of things and, uh, a- anyway, just something that I think we ought to think about, maybe with our new facilities guy and just, just keep in the back of your mind, area, maybe we could just be aware of and when other projects or other things come down the line, we might be thinking about that. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea and to kind of go along with that too, I'm sure that there are clubs that, that could also, you know, use this as an opportunity for community service projects and that kind of thing, so, yeah, thank you. Okay, so are we ready to vote on it? Is there a motion?
Do we need to make any amendments?
I think everything's good. I would just put, make an emotion recommending approval as presented.
Okay.
I move to approve the addition of a reflection garden at Clark County High School as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Okay, school board member comments. So time is set aside on the agenda for school board member comments to share thoughts and concerns or to report on events. So Mr. Brumback?
I would just echo Dr. Bowling's comments on our wonderful addition to the finance team. I think that's wonderful, wonderful presentation and I understood and clear, not that I didn't before, but anyway, thank you for jumping in so well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, Mr. Powell, could we anticipate that you are gonna have something about the state phone regulations and that they will be enforced here?
You mean cell phone?
Yeah, cell phone, yeah. No matter how you do it, somebody's gonna show up with, a couple of kids are gonna show up with them. But the more work we can get out there, the better off I think it will be, yeah. Okay, thank you. And I guess all the physical plant is ready to go?
I think so. We're getting there.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
Um, I echo that as well. Welcome aboard. Coming from a, it's a government contractor, I can appreciate acronyms. As far as physical plant and how we stand with that, we talked about the upper campus and I'd like to see some attention to that over the upcoming year, especially, I don't believe it's gonna stay vacant, but it's gonna have limited use. And nothing's more detrimental to a physical building than sitting empty and non-conditioned. Well, it already has its issues, all our campuses do, so we need to just be cognizant of that and keep that on the horizon as we approach. We all know we have a wish list, so.
Yes.
That's all I would ask that we, we kinda keep that at the forefront. Other than that, happy summer.
Yeah, and with that building, we are planning, you know, to keep it up and utilities and keep walking through and we do have the lease with Head Start and parts and wreck are there. And it is structurally very sound, but its list of needs are long as even exists currently and estimates have been incre- you know, incredibly high. The good thing is it's not leaking or anything, but the roof is nearing its end and we've put that off for two or three years now. Unfortunately, the cost estimate for it is substantial, so we'll have to make some decisions, you know, with wish lists and stuff soon.
And for my comments, I wanna say thank you for the opportunity to be the, the next chair and for your patience tonight and the clunkiness of getting through this meeting and congratulations to Mr. Brumback. I'm excited to and thankful for this opportunity. And also wanted to say, Mr. Nutti, I feel the same way about the finance meetings. It's, it's really helpful the way that you break it down and then the way that you also have shared like our numbers from the prior month because I, even though I save everything and I have everything written down from the month before, I don't always have it like right with me, so I really, really appreciate the heads-up on just slight changes that we see from month to month, whether it's from the state or county, so appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, so it's, um, do we have a motion to move into closed session?
I move to convene a closed session to discuss personnel matters including appointments and resignations pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1 and review plans related to school safety and security pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19. The estimated time required for the closed session is thirty minutes and action is expected.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I've moved to reconvene an open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, action based on closed session recommendations. Do I have a motion on the personnel agenda?
I move to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
And then...
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then, is there a motion on the emergency response plans reviewed during closed session?
A move to accept the emergency response plans as presented in our closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I will adjourn the meeting.
Oh, speaking of school security.